Yeah, thank you.
You can commemorate.
You are more than welcome to stay until you're done.
Okay, let's call it a order, the April 28th meeting of the Hammond County Board of Commissioners. Let the record indicate that all three commissioners are present. First item is to stand for the pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is to approve the executive session memorandum of April 14th and 28th. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is to approve the minutes of April 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is bid openings. Connor?
Yes, the first one we have is for the Hamilton County Special Projects 2025 bid package number five, community corrections, water heater replacement. The first one, the bid is unknown, project is unknown, was received today at 11:02 a.m. Contractor, this is for the special, Hamilton County Special Projects 2025 bid package, the number five, community correction water heater replacement, contractor is Dean LLC, and the total cost is $315,800. They have listed the scope of work and exclusions that were used to generate their estimate. The next one is from Sorillo Plumbing, and this is again for the 2025 Special Projects, number five, the community corrections, water heater replacement. Where is this one? Their total is $424,513.87. That's all we have, is that sound right to you, Mr. Wood? And would you provide a recommendation for the?
Next commissioners' meeting, and we'll get copies made and get into the office as well.
Anybody else commissioners for that?
Motion to approve.
Any motion to approve that?
Motion to refer for recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Maybe next one is for bridge, Bridge 154, rehabilitation project, 126th Street over Cool Creek. This is from BD Construction. The bid bond is here. Certified check. 496. Appears all of it is here, one second, the actual dollar amount. One second, sorry. All right, total bid is $3,317,234.51. Again, that's BD Construction. Next, the next one is for, from Duncan Robertson. They have their bid bond, their 496 non collusion affidavit, their E verification, scope of the project, good to go, financial statement is there. The proposal, the proposal amount is
Say that again, please. Two million, what?
One second.
Thank you.
The next one is, the next proposal is from E&amp;B Paving. They have their itemized proposal breakdown, their E verification, bid bond, their non collusion affidavit, 496, financial statement and the addendum for it. So the proposal for this one is $2,969,000. Nothing else. Yeah, that's $2,969,000. That's for E&amp;B Paving. The next one is from HIS Constructors, Inc. They have their 496, itemized, breakdown of proposal, financial statement, bid bond, their non collusion affidavit, their E, employment verification and their financial statements. And the, the actual dollar amount is Again, that's HIS Constructors, Inc. Next one is from Milestone Contractors, LP. They have their 496, their bid bond, their financials, their non collusion affidavit. They have the proposal, their E verification, and their proposed dollar amount is $2,975,000. Again, that is Milestone Contractors, and their bid was $2,975,000. This is the last one for Bridge 154, it is from Superior. They have their itemized proposal, bid bond, their 496, non collusion affidavit, the receipt of the addendum, the E verification, should be good to go, and then their itemized proposal is I believe that is all the proposals we have received for Bridge 154 Rehabilitation Project, which is 126th Street over Cool Creek. Is there any other proposals that anyone is aware of? Joel, one would you guys like to provide?
Friday.
Fisher, I request a motion for the, to submit to Highway for Review and provide a recommendation at your Highway meeting on Friday.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The last one is the resurface project 25-ER1 to 81st Street from State Road 213 to State Road 37 in White River Township. First one is from Midwest Paving. They have their 496, non collusion affidavit, their bid bond, their financial statements, they're enclosed in there, itemized proposal, their E verification. And then their proposed amount was Again, that's Midwest Paving. The next one is from DC Construction Services. They have their 496, their financial statements, non collusion affidavit, bid bond, their E verification, certification, itemized proposal. Appears they should be good to go. Their bid was $1,751,756.54. Again, that's DC Construction Services, Inc. The next one is E&amp;B Paving LLC. Their itemized proposal, 496, bid bond. They're not really labeled this, that looks really well. The E verification is in here. They have corporate certificate there. Well, E verified documents, one second. I apologize, can I show this is why it was not labeled this, the other ones were? Collusion affidavit, okay, bid bond, there we go, okay, we got that, all right. So their itemized proposal is $1,615,690.17. The next one is from Assured Partners. They have their finance and equipment certification right there. Bid bond. 496 is present, non collusion, E verification is all good to go. Their bid or proposal is $1,830,556.90. Again, that is Assured Partners.
Say that again.
One second.
Thank you.
The next one is Baumgarten and Company Asphalt Services. 496 is attached, their financial statements are attached, their E verification, their bid bond, non collusion, itemized proposal, and their proposal is $1,820,720. Again, that's Baumgarten and Company. And the last one is Reef Riley. They have their 496, their financials, their bid bond, their E verification. And their non collusion affidavits in there, and where's the? And their proposal is $1,531,000. That's Reef Riley. Same thing as for Friday?
Yes.
So Fisher, that's all the proposals we received, is there anyone out there that knows of any more? Fisher, if you would make a motion to ascend to the Highway for Recommendation at Friday's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item is highway business. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Very short agenda for you today, the only item I have is for acceptance of some bonds and letters of credit. I have a letter dated April 28th, for five bonds, we recommend acceptance.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I think Brad may have an item.
Only remind you of Friday, we should, oh, the advertised, the first part of that is exactly possible.
Okay, and how long?
Is it advertised for that?
Pardon me?
Is it advertised for that?
No, but it can be.
It can be.
Okay.
So how much time do you think you're going to need, because we've got to stack other items on top?
Yeah.
I would say an hour, hour fifteen minutes.
For exact?
For exact?
No, 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 for the whole meeting.
The whole meeting?
How much do you think is exact?
Probably 25 minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
One more item, bids that were just read, Assured Partners was read, the total of $1,830,556.90. The contractor that they represent is Howard Asphalt. This one is down on the record.
Well, I apologize about that.
Some of those don't aren't put together better than others.
Next item on the agenda is Hamilton County Emergency Management, Chad Connet.
I think you skipped over Health Department at the bottom of that first page.
Yeah.
You're right, I did, I'm sorry. Jason, now I could have forgotten you, Jason, I'll never know.
It's unforgettable, that's all right, I was like, uh-oh, did I get the wrong copy of the long agenda? It was amended, but I didn't realize it, sorry. Today in front of you, to request, present, request approval to maintain or renew our contract with TeleTask Incorporated. TeleTask is our service provider that does, that we work with to do health messaging, to do our appointment and recalls with our patients.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
I'm sure you were disappointed to see what happened at the State House with HFI, with Health First Indiana.
Yeah, yes.
I think there were a lot of people throughout the state that were really disappointed with that.
Very much so, and I, yeah, it's definitely going to hurt, it's going to hurt across the state. We're making so much forward progress, and now a lot of that's really just going to be paused.
Absolutely.
But we'll work through it, and we'll do the best we can with what we get.
Yeah, thank you, Jason.
Okay, now Ted.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
First item on the agenda is for a request for approval for an authorization for meals for the night of the tornado for our personnel that weren't allowed to leave the EOC in that extended period, and then the crews that went out and did the actual damage assessments for the tornado strike area.
That was for $410.88.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The second item is for Federal Signal, you know, Federal Signal is our contractor for equipment and service for our outdoor warning sirens in the event of storms. They're activated in tornadoes, severe weather events throughout the county, as well as other emergencies. We have a rather outdated couple pieces of equipment. The way those work is they send a radio signal from our tower out to a receiver radio in our EOC, Noblesville and Carmel. We haven't done redundancy in the system, where we have three encoders and systems. One of those systems is outdated but still operational, and two of them are not operational. So the three pieces of equipment need to be upgraded in order to allow us to have that higher level of encryption and shorten window so that they can't be falsely set off by someone maliciously going out and intercepting that signal. With the previous hardware, it was able to be duplicated for a 90-minute period of time, with this new period that was significantly reduced for a very short period of time. And the need to facilitate all three of those encoders at the same time so that they have the same firmware, the same date of hardware, and can all be locked down to that UTC Universal Time Code System for that encoding. And we were able to allocate funds within the Lit Communication Lit, for Public Safety Communications, to pay for this, to actually purchase all three encoders and install them and program them and have them up and operational for the entire county.
I would attest to this upgrade because we have had some people manipulating in the past.
Yes, ma'am.
Which is very difficult with public safety. I just want to clarify that the cities and towns will continue to maintain their internal horns that set off, correct?
Yes, ma'am, the physical sirens and the maintaining of the equipment and the systems for those is the obligation of the individual, cities and jurisdictions. This being an operational system security item, we opted to do those all three at once within our funds, but it in no way, shape or form impacts that mutual operating agreement for the payment of the sirens.
And for the record, it's $23,067.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ted.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is ISSD, Chris Murgers.
Good afternoon.
Hello, just one item on the agenda, it's an order for a new copier. It's going to be placed over in the Child Support Office that's going into the Blue Sky Building. They'll be paying for that, and just going to add it to our service agreement to get the low cost per page.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thanks, Chris. E911, Public Safety Communications, Mike Cubs.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Items number one through three are basically all the same, there's a signature page. And that is an amendment to our existing 911 contract with ATT to come off copper lines and move over to SIP fiber. So, long needed upgrade for our telephony system, it's included in our budget, and we're ready to move forward internally to get us off copper. But that's one through three, three being the signature page.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Item number four, my question, just to take that off your agenda, Brian Bethel's in the back. We had a meeting today with the existing vendor, and we need to update that. So what you have before you is not, we're not ready to move forward with it.
Move to table.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you, and thanks for your support this past week for dispatch week, as much as I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is legal rulings, risk and compliance. Rebecca Scott.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I have before you today a proposed agreement with Trustlayer, a third-party insurance tracking vendor. Today, I'm requesting your support and signature to proceed with entering this agreement, as well as your authorization to issue a formal notice of termination to the current CPA.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you, and then I respectfully request that item number two be struck from the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Commissioner, committee reports.
I just wanted to mention that Hamilton County won two awards at the ACEC Indiana Awards Banquet this last week. Thank you, USI, for your team and all the communication that you had throughout that project. It was a very successful project. More importantly, I wanted to recognize our Highway team. Didn't really get a chance really to talk about what the Highway does and all their involvement in that project every single day, working and coordinating. Joel Brad and Matt Lee and the entire team. I mean, a lot of times it seems like, you know, the commissioners may get the credit for it, but I just want to make sure that they're recognized because they're really the ones that did a lot of the work behind the scenes to make it the successful projects that they did, so that's all I have.
And the projects were the Pleasant Street Bridge.
Yeah, Bridge 310.
And I just, I met with the 911 building team, the BOD team, 911 and EMA, looking with Steve Wood on some revisions we could do to that building to cut some of the costs, which I think were all good provisions. And I would note, luckily when I was there, they set the first beam, so we're moving ahead well on that project.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Next item on the agenda is attorney.
Yes, thank you, I have a few items for you today, commissioners. The first is engagement to not, do not exceed $15,000 for policy analytics. We've discussed this previously, and they can help with.
Financial analysis, Senate Bill 1.
Yeah, yes, so I have that for your approval today, it's just the present.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is the agreement between Hamilton County and Mercury Broadband. There's a couple, I think it might have been a couple months ago at this point. The commissioners requested Mike Thodo to go to the council, and the council did agree to support it with $400,000. Is our match for, our local match for broadband for Mercury. Mercury has since worked with Okra and Lieutenant Governor's Office to be in compliance with everything they need to from a B and next level grant requirements. I, it's, I believe Mike Thodo has briefed you on this previously, a couple commissioner meetings ago. We just finally have it in writing. Nothing has changed since Mike's presentation, I believe Mike actually might be here. If there are questions about it, but otherwise, it's essentially the same, and it's just now ready to be formally adopted by review.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The next item I have is a certificate of substantial completion. This is for the US 31 corridor infrastructure project. I know Steve Wood has briefed you on this previously. Reynolds Construction is at the point in our build, operate, transfer, procure method that some of the assets are now complete, and it makes financial sense for those, the ownership of those to be transferred over to us so that we don't have to pay Reynolds to insure it and some other items of that nature. Steve Wood has worked with Westfield Engineering and Stephen Rushforth and the rest of the GRC team to get the paperwork set up, Lee Buckham as well. The items that are substantially complete in Phase 1 are the wastewater treatment plant, water station number two, and there's a litany of sanitary sewers, San B, San C, San D, San F and G, sanitary forest mains, forest mains 1 and 2, booster station 1, elevator, elevated water storage tower and water mains, lines A, C, E and F. Phase 2, items that are substantially complete are lift station number 4, lift station number 5, sanitary sewers, San F, J and L, sanitary forest mains line X and water mains lines WM-L and X. So I have that for your, and Steve Wood recommends this as well. So this, I have this for your approval today. And once the other assets, as they start coming online, we'll work with the accounting's insurance team to make sure that the insurance is set up, and make sure it still makes sense for ownership to be transferred prior to the actual completion of the project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
We started, just put the arrow where we usually sign.
On the bottom line?
Yeah, yeah, just right above where all the arrows are.
And I think that is, that is it. Mike, you want to say anything? Andrew?
Yes, so we also have the digital.
No, we're going to do that next one.
I do have.
Yes.
We talked last meeting about the explosive device, the tannurite, is that it? Is it possible with our sound, if we, with our noise ordinance, that we could test different sizes of explosions and read the decibels and prohibit some under the sound ordinance? Because those kind of things drive me crazy, because there's no good use for it, it's just an annoyance. And I think that's the intent of using that?
Can I volunteer to test it?
Yeah, I'll say, I'd gladly, we'll, we'll, we'll share, we'll share, absolutely, that sounds like a good home assignment.
Interesting, I was thinking about how.
That's pretty exciting.
Yeah.
I think the concern is, from my perspective, that impulse, sound and other things that you might capture in that ordinance to me just seems difficult to write to me, things like an airplane or, you know, those types of things.
Sure, sorry, sure. And very honestly, when we created that ordinance, it was for Deer Creek. And I was out at Deer Creek many a nights when we went out and checked noises and stuff. It's not easy to do, even when the music thing, let alone with the boom.
But it might deter some use. I mean, at this point, I think someone's going to get hurt, quite honestly. Either with the substance or just from the reaction of the, of the noise.
Fisher, we will look into that, work with the sheriff, I, we've worked with him and some of his team and Amy Starfield to try to re-violize a few of our ordinances that were having some troubles with enforcement to make, to increase the enforceability of those, and so we'll add that.
Well, just figure if there's some way, and the same on fire, I mean, I know the state regulates fireworks, but I would think just because of the noise. but I would think just because of the noise issues and other concerns, we could do a better job.
Mike?
Yeah.
Should, should we look into having similar ordinances with the municipality? Sheriff, your thoughts on that? I want to get into where the borders are because I'm not sure anybody knows exactly where they are. And it would seem like it would be, if you have a uniform ordinance and any law enforcement also would have the authority to enforce, then you don't get away getting this problem of where the borders are.
And they may have done some of the work.
Yeah, they may be down the road, but we don't know.
But how, how do you enforce a boom?
No, but if it's constant, you, you get away, you know, probably like the one bite rule. But if it's constant, then I think we would have a tool to stop the activity.
I, I think it's difficult. Our, our ordinance now does talk about continuous noise.
Two minutes or some, or several minutes.
Well, we would have to make an amendment.
Yeah.
No, I understand that. I just, it's, it's hard to, in my mind, write something that's going to limit it to just prohibiting this and not capture other normal activities. I do think anything that can make it consistent and easier for the citizens to understand would be important. So, engaging...
Have we had any other complaints other than what we had last meeting?
Random, periodically throughout the county, yes.
And these were basically kids that was over there shooting, from what I understand. There's not even a house over there, but it was across the street from the city.
Yeah, it was in our jurisdiction, yeah.
Yeah.
I just think we ought to look at it.
We will.
It's just such an annoyance that our citizens don't have to have for no good purpose.
Yeah. Commissioner, we will work with Sheriff and his team in Fort Pack, A-7.
Where are we at with the policy in regards to 161st and Gray and...
That's one of the ones that we were going to revisit. It's a junk vehicle ordinance. We're going to revisit that one for enforceability issues.
Okay, Director of Administration.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Commissioners.
I have several matters today, um, being several things that have been added since I've submitted my agenda over the last day and a half, four days. First off, presenting for your review, approval, and signature, Commissioner Harebrand, I have SRF disbursement form related to the April 9th, 2025 invoice, that being invoice number 4674VB, in the amount of $173,733.28 from Westfield Engineering for design land acquisition, construction administration, and construction management services related to Phase 2A and/or 2B of the US 31 Baker's Corner Hamilton County Regional Utility District project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, full favor.
Aye.
Hi, Moes Cares.
Item number two, presenting for your review, approval, and the signature of Commissioner Harebrand, I have SRF disbursement form related to the April 4th, 2025 invoice, invoice number 52310-11, in the amount of $659,086.34 from Reynolds Construction LLC for equipment materials and instruction services related to the US 31 Baker's Corner Hamilton County Regional Utility District project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, full favor.
Aye.
Hi, Moes Cares.
Item number three, I'm presenting for your review, approval, and the signature of all three Commissioners. I have the real estate lease eneasement that was drafted and approved by the County Attorney's Office for the extension of the lease of the county property located at 18336 Cumberland Road to the Senior Citizens Organization, Inc. The current lease with Senior Citizens Organization, Inc. expires on December 31st of 2025. This lease will provide a two-year extension to that lease with an expiration occurring on December 31st of 2027. I'm asking for a motion to approve the lease and for all three Commissioners to sign the document along with the at the station by order of Clevinger and then a notary signature.
Commissioners, if you don't mind, can we have that at the next one, since it is a lease? I apologize. I think that might have slipped on my end, but we will have to have a public hearing for that.
Yeah.
And so we can...
Motion to the table.
Second.
Discussion, full favor.
Aye.
Hi, Moes Cares.
I apologize. We got plenty of time to, that doesn't expire till the end of the year. We're just trying to get ahead of the game.
Item number four, I'm presenting for your review, discussion, and approval, a request from Lisa Hanny, 4H Purdue Extension Facility Event Coordinator, requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve the recommendation of the 4H Buildings and Grounds Committee following their review of the three bids that were received for boat storage for the 2025, 2026 winter season. 4H Buildings and Grounds Committee recommends the Commissioners accept the highest bid, which is the, was the bid of $35,000 received from David McIntosh of AMF Power Boats. This is, for your information, this is the vendor that is, that contracted this past winter and there were no problems during the boat storage season.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, full favor.
Aye.
Hi, Moes Cares.
Item number five, presenting for your review, discussion, and approval, I submitted a memo to you requesting the formal termination of the mandatory compressed natural gas vehicle outfit program. This program has been dying a slow death in many ways for many years, and I am formally requesting the program be terminated for the various reasons laid out in the memo, specifically the high cost of insulation that is often not recouped on some vehicles, two, lack of cost effectiveness in that the CMG systems do not reach a break-even point until five years of use or more, and sometimes never on lower mileage vehicles, and three, operational issues and under utilization due to operational space utilization and other CMG performance issues. So that's my general recommendation as a follow-up. If you do terminate the required mandatory program, I would request that you specify, that if departments have a request to remove any CMG systems, that you develop a policy with respect to that. My recommendation would be that you have an across-the-board policy, but make it clear that any costs associated with that would be the responsibility of the individual department.
So when you say program, I just want to make sure we're clear. There are some departments that use it and use it successfully?
Specifically Buildings and, Buildings and Grounds would like to continue utilizing it.
So what we're discontinuing is the requirement that CMG be considered for all fleet vehicles?
Correct. Those departments that wish, broadly, this was, this potential of terminating the mandatory policy of outfitting was very warmly welcomed in general, but there were one or two departments that wanted to continue utilizing it, specifically I know Buildings and Grounds does.
Okay.
Okay.
So this would enable them to continue utilizing it and doing what they want on the CMG.
So I guess the motion is to discontinue the requirement of use on county-owned or operated vehicles and make it permissive only?
Correct.
Second.
Discussion, full favor.
Aye.
Hi, Moes Cares.
And then I'd also move that if existing vehicles are equipped with CMG, that they coordinate the removal through the Director of Administration, understanding the cost of removal and rehab to the vehicle will be on the department budget.
Okay.
Second.
We have a vote.
Full favor.
Aye.
Hi, Moes Cares.
Okay, next item.
That's something highway can do. Put in the lift in the dark, right?
You just stop using, you just leave the stuff on there.
Well, if you want more room in your vehicle, that was the bigger complaint.
Okay.
Yeah. Next item, presenting for your review, discussion, approval, and the signature of Commissioner Dillinger as the Board of Commissioner President. I have a request from Heather Bennett and Chris Moore from the ISS Department regarding having the Board of Commissioners sign off on a DocuSign order form agreement. This is a quote that the ISS Department is wanting to have executed so they can get needed additional DocuSign licenses. They asked me to bring it to you as that this was not, document was not received by them until after the agenda was formally completed.
And to clarify again, it's not the license. It's really the numbers of documents signed. So we'll continue with one license, correct?
Correct, yeah. It's, our renewal is up at the end of next month.
Uh-huh.
But based on our usage, we were going to come just short, so we're renewing a month early our existing agreement for the number of envelopes that we have to send throughout the year.
Would you also check, I, it's, I know it's a big program, but is there a way that we could have our own code or something that shows the recipient that it's verified or have a cross tie of whoever to check with? Those things scare me when they come through.
When you get the, the email itself?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I can ask to see if there's any change that we could make to that email that gets sent when you send an electronic...
Yeah, if I'm not expecting something like that, it's just, it always looks like a fishing expedition to me.
Now, I will say they, we presented this order here, but they, they will want to send an electronic document for someone of you three to sign. Do you want that to go to Steve as the president then to sign through email?
Do you want to get a DocuSign to sign?
They, he doesn't like doing that, I know that.
Well, it's, that's the easiest program ever. And that's what's scary is you just click on the link and it says, do you like these initials? And you say, yeah, and then you click on another link and it's done.
I usually have the attorney review it before I ever sign any of them.
It'll be the same document you just, was presented there, but they, they require it to be signed electronically as a DocuSign company, I guess.
You can do it.
Send it to you.
Don't give it to me. Give it to Mark.
I'll do it. I don't care if he sends it. I'm happy to sign, use the DocuSign.
You know, you, you're...
Just send me a little note that it's coming.
It will probably come later today, I would guess.
Okay, cool. And I'll show you how.
I know, I just don't reject that.
I was going to say, usually the auditor's calling me, saying, hey, we need to sign this now.
Okay, next item I have, I'm presenting for your review, discussion, and approval, a request from Kathy Williams on behalf of the Noblesville Noon Kuanis Club, requesting authorization for the annual, annual event placing memorial flags around the historic courthouse. Flags would be put up on Thursday, May 22nd of 2025 and removed Tuesday, May 27th of 2025.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion, full favor.
Aye.
Hi, Moes Cares.
Now, some additional items. Number eight, presenting for your review, discussion, decision. I have a, oh, this is the matter that Commissioner Altman sent out regarding the letter of support regarding the affordable housing legislation at the federal level. I think she wanted the board to consider whether to formally, as a board, sign off on the letter of support for this federal legislation.
Were you able to review that whole thing?
Huh?
Were you able to review all of it?
Well, that's what, no, I was asking, lead to it.
Okay.
So...
Because when I, when I saw it, I didn't know.
I know. I thought I was, I passed it along.
Yeah. And I didn't get a chance to read, read it. And I just wanted to make sure that, that key initiatives fit within what we want to have done here for our housing.
It, it's, the basic premise is they want to make, make affordable housing easier to attain and implement. Apparently, the way it currently works, there's a 50% match required and that...
Is for the grants.
Under, under certain circumstances, it's been hard to attain, and so they want to reduce the grant match limit, is what...
Yeah, it's not talking about local issues. It's more the federal funding of those grant programs.
The only thing that scares me with federal is there's always strings attached.
Well, they're trying to reduce some of the strings.
So, what do you want to do? It would, so the things that would do would lower the 50% test bond financing threshold for 4% housing credit developments. It would expand the 9% housing credit and allow for basis boosts to better serve hard-to-reach communities.
It, it would sound good.
Yeah.
I would move that we, as a board, execute the support letter and send it in.
Second.
Discussion.
I will just note that it's a electronic document that I want you to sign and complete.
Okay.
Full favor.
Aye.
Hi, Moes Cares.
The due date is tomorrow.
Can you get that done?
Oh, it's actually the 30th.
Is it?
Yeah.
I thought it said the 29th.
Oh, I thought it was the 30th.
Yeah, I think it's the 29th I saw it, but...
Yes.
Because we're running out of time.
Okay. Next item I have, the surveyor document that was brought up at Drainage Board Meeting earlier today.
Say that you're...
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, full favor.
Aye.
Hi, Moes Cares.
Then I have a request that was received this morning from Shelby Clayton of Buildings and Grounds, requesting authorization for the Sheriff's Department to dispose of a 2014 Ford F-2V, F-250 vehicle. And that form...
Through government deals or what?
Actually, this one, Sheriff's Department, they're continuing to work through enterprise.
Okay.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion, full favor.
Aye.
I'm just pointing out that the trailer that we didn't think was worth anything was over $750 on Doug Deals the last time I looked. I don't know where it ended up, but it was a significant...
The last item I have for you is a, an amended or updated 2026 holiday listing, which removes the primary election day, Tuesday, May 5th, and also removes the general election day, Tuesday, November 3rd. Shows that the primary election is eliminated due to no primary election and the general election is eliminated due to no current anticipated meeting of election. If that were to change, you could reconsider that at that point in time.
There a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, full favor.
Aye.
Hi, Moes Cares.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you need a vote for number six, the DocuSign? You did not get a motion or a...
Can I get a motion to vote with respect to the ISS DocuSign document?
Second.
Discussion, full favor.
Aye.
Hi, Moes Cares.
Thank you.
Sheriff.
I don't have anything for you guys today. Thank you.
Thank you. Man of honor, Mr., I'm sorry, man of honor. Your honor, honor.
That's right.
I'm sorry.
To be quick, there's no doubt you sign.
I've been talking to Robert so long, I keep calling you man of honor.
After 40 years.
Yeah. There you have it.
For your review and for Commissioner Dillinger's signature, I have the pro-audit engagement letter.
Some move.
Second. Is this going through the state where the state selects for us?
Yes. You don't sign it, does that mean I don't get audited?
You're going through a non-audits right now.
Okay, Moes, second. Full favor.
Aye.
Hi, Moes Cares.
I have a release of bonds and letters of credit.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, full favor.
Aye.
Hi, Moes Cares.
Health truck monthly expenditure.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion, full favor.
Aye.
Hi, Moes Cares.
I have arrow claims.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion, full favor.
Aye.
Hi, Moes Cares.
And vendor claims.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion, full favor.
Aye.
Hi, Moes Cares.
All I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else to come before the general session of the Board of Commissioners? Hearing none, we will recess for five minutes and go to the back room for a work session. Anyone is welcome to join us back there. And that will adjourn this part of the meeting.